Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's online community forum. My name is Pam Duncan, and I am the president and CEO of Metropolitan Development Council. We are partnering with the Tacoma Urban League. And in the absence of the president and CEO Twina Nobles, who is on leave this month, we will be partnering and having a great conversation with our moderator Amanda Westbrook. Amanda?
Thank you so much, Pam. Tonight's conversation is the 21st, wow, in a series of discussions that we are diving into the different ways that COVID-19 is impacting Tacoma and Pierce County. Tonight, we will have a discussion about the impacts of housing, including the current eviction moratorium in place in Washington and across the US, and sources of assistance that can help people stay in their housing throughout this difficult time. Tonight, our guests are Jason Whalen, Jenny Hitchen, and Ryan Mello, who is just coming on and working on his volume. Thank you, all three of you, for joining us tonight.
And as a reminder, we will be here for the community throughout the COVID-19 crisis with New Conversations With A Purpose every Monday evening at 5:00 PM. The most important message throughout the series of conversations is that there is hope for our community. Our focus is to create space in each meeting to talk about resources and things that we can all be doing to help get through this pandemic.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that this meeting is being conducted on the indigenous lands of the Puolot people. We gratefully acknowledge that we rest on the traditional lands of the Puolot people, where they make their home and speak the Leshuteed seed language. Throughout today's conversation, you can submit questions to be addressed by our speakers by using the Q and A, also known as question and answer function in Zoom. We cannot promise we'll have time to consider every question, but as always, we'll make our best effort to get through the list in our allotted time. We have 10 questions tonight, so let's get started, shall we? First, I want to make sure that, Ryan Mello, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Excellent, Ryan. Thank you for relogging back on to be with us. So the first thing that we do is we check in with each of you, and that includes our beloved Pam Duncan. And I want to ask the question of all four of you. How are you holding up today? And you can answer that as you see fit. I will not be calling on people.
Well, I'll break the ice. Jenny, unless you wanted to break the ice?
Go for it, Ryan. You beat me to it. It was that uncomfortable Zoom silence.
That silence is super important, as Amanda is an expert in to hold it. So I'm glad you do. That's so well, Amanda. I think I'm doing okay. I'm an incredibly privileged human being. I have a roof over my head. I have work that I love. My day job at the Pierce Conservation District, where I've been since 2012, I have a great team and job security that I'm incredibly grateful for, a partner who loves me. I'm counting my blessings left and right and trying to remember people who are nowhere near as privileged or fortunate as I am as a white male. You know, I identify as a gay man and have been an out gay man since my college days here at the University of Pudahou Sound, but I, as you know, I haven't been able to see my family in Hawaii. Certainly have not been able to see folks. And you know, it's going on months like seven and I'm my mental health concerns and you know, it's definitely getting to me, mental health wise. My anxiety is higher, definitely feel it. And I'm trying to check my privilege and keep it in perspective that my anxiety and my loneliness of folks and my mild mental health issues, you know, are nowhere near as compared to other folks in our community.
Ryan, thank you for that. Very well said.
I'm happy to chat in if Jenny wants to take next, if you'd like, or otherwise I can just I feel like this is an A L F check-in almost.
Yeah, so I had my first time since we shut down schools last March. I'm a high school science teacher and reported to work today, which was weird, taking my home office into school and resetting everything up. And then, you know, how empty the room is and it really made it real to me, like it being in my classroom with desks still up on counters, that there were no students coming in, you know. And it's very obvious when I'm on Zoom with kids that they're at home or wherever they can be. But it's, for me, the hardest thing of being a teacher in this time is the lack of seeing kids' faces and that engagement. And so it becomes just a job because you don't get that social interaction with your kids and that joy and passion just doesn't come over in Zoom. Those kids that, you know, need that and really need that, they tend to find ways to get it in. But I know that I'm missing kids and that today really kind of hit home. So that's where I am.
Spoken like a woman who was born to be a teacher. Thank you for that. All right, Mr. Jason?
Well, thank you, Amanda. Just a quick check in. I think things are going as well as they can be, you know, all of us who have been grappling with the COVID issues in our personal lives and our business lives know that it's been a challenge. For me, like Ryan, I'm privileged, you know, we have a home over our head. We've got lovely daughters that are doing their thing. My youngest daughter is working from home, doing her schooling as her first year in high school in a sort of, you know, not even hybrid yet model, but she's doing a great job of being attuned to her classes and plugged in front of her computer all day. My middle child, who graduated from Oregon State this year, was lucky to have a job, but she's hardly been in the office for her first job out of college. She's been working completely remotely. So we've got our whole house full of people working remotely, but at least we're working, which is a good thing. In my day-to-day job, I have a small practice, law practice downtown Tacoma, and we have all been working remotely since March. And so the coordination challenges with staff and then you have staff who have young children who have to be at home to help their children plug in for the online learning that Jenny and so many other great teachers are providing. It's been challenging to navigate all of that and to keep the office moving forward and to keep all the staff engaged as best we can. And then on the flip side of it, as a small business lawyer, we have, of course, have to kind of keep our handholding many of our clients through a lot of the challenges. And I do a fair amount of real estate and small business work, and that involves some of the issues we're talking about tonight in terms of rent issues, even on the commercial side. And I do a fair amount of residential landlord tenant work as well. So there's a lot of angst and anxiety out there. And I think for myself, we're doing as best we can, but there's a lot of angst we are all dealing with and trying to do the best we can.
Beautifully said, Jason. Pam, would you share with us how you're holding up today?
I am doing well today, and I'm glad to say that I am doing well. I love autumn. I love summer, late summer days, early autumn days like this. And I just consider myself to also be greatly blessed, even in the midst of everything that we are dealing with, that I have the opportunity to serve. And that's what makes me who I am at my core. So I'm glad I am still in a position where I can serve.
Ah, love that. I think getting outside of yourself and serving cures everything. That's one of the things that touches my heart deeply. Speaking of serving, let's talk about, I'd like the three of you, Jason, Ryan, and Jenny, to, you've already did a beautiful job of introducing yourself in terms of how you're checking in today. I want our audience to know that the three of you are also running for a position on the Pierce County Council. And could you just take a moment, each of you, to talk about why you are running for this position? And I'll let you jump in as you see fit once again.
Well, I'm happy to take that. We'll go in reverse order this time, I suppose. As I've mentioned on a few forums, for me, it was about a year of a decision-making process between my wife and I and others who were asking me to run. And upon reflection of my work with the Lakewood City Council, I've been on the Lakewood Council for the last 11 years and been serving as deputy mayor for the city of Lakewood for six of the last 11. I have so much enjoyed the opportunity to work as a team, a collaborative team, to get good things done for the community. And you know, the rotary motto is service above self, and I try to live that as best I can in the various things that I've been able to do and been honored to be able to do in the community. The opportunity that came to serve on the county council was one that after much thought between my family, myself, and others, was one I thought would be a fantastic opportunity to do good things for a broader spectrum of our community. And that's why I decided to run. Great opportunity to have even a greater sense of teamwork and accomplishment. Really enjoy the teamwork and collaborative work I did in Lakewood, and I thought my skill set would be well suited to this. I look forward to serving at a different level, yeah.
Thank you.
So I chose to run because as a teacher, I noticed a disconnect between community and people and elected leaders. And I really wanted to make sure that people felt like they could come and talk to me, that I could do the outreach and get involved with the communities across the entire, for me, it's the sixth county district, across the entire district. So not just one area, not just one community, not just one group. And I really wanted to push for that because there were decisions being made that people were going and asking the county council to address and change, and they were not. And it bothered me because I'm all about listening to my students, I'm all about listening to my peers, and I'm all about then doing something with that information. I've been doing it my entire career. And I want to take my ability to do a lot of really creative thinking, not a typical politician, because again, high school science teacher, union leader. And so I chose to run because I was frustrated, and instead of complaining, I'm doing. And so I am running for office for the first time as a first-time candidate. Wasn't planning on a pandemic and civil unrest or any of the other stuff that seems to keep coming up in 2020. I don't know what's next. But I just, I'm so pleased that I am because I think when we, when and if we get to this whole recovery part, which I hope we get to, that we will have somebody like me with my skill sets at the table to be a voice for people, that people feel comfortable to be a woman there, to make sure that we are represented and that people feel like somebody is going to be listening to them and then acting on their behalf.
Beautiful clarity. Thank you. Ryan?
I really think this is the most important question we can ever answer, and you heard great answers from my peers. I reflected on this long and hard. Campaigns are brutal. And so you have to ask yourself, why would someone want to put themselves through the brutality of a campaign on top of a pandemic? You know, and then serving, you know, takes, but you know, no one no one forced me to do this. And at the end of the day, I've asked to do this because I too am passionate to serve my community. And the reason I'm running and my partner and I, my partner Sean and I had this conversation about, you know, do we really upheave our lives to do this? And the answer is absolutely, because so many of the things that I've got to work on on the Tacoma City Council are really regional issues. And if I learned anything on the Tacoma City Council, 10 years serving there, is that the most challenging issues that we're working on must be solved at the regional level. Tacoma can do their part, and they are doing their part in so many areas, but that's only goes so far, and they got to be advanced at a regional level. The other major thing I learned while serving on the Tacoma City Council is you got to build coalitions in order to get big things done. And so I've been asked to lead by the advocacy community on lots of things that matter, whether it's designing the city of Tacoma's first Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or passing the city of Tacoma's mental health tax when the county would not for years on end, or really taking climate change seriously and passing the very first environmental action plan and a moratorium on any new fossil fuel facilities. On all of those things, not only was I asked to lead and then did I lead and we made good progress, but I built coalitions that would last for a long time to make movement on the next thing and the next thing and the next thing. I get passionate about bringing community together to do those things and building the muscles of community to make big change. And so I want to take that kind of energy to the Pierce County Council.
Well said. Thank you, all three of you. So my next question for all three of you is, what do you see is the biggest issue in the council district you are hoping to represent? And Jenny, let's start with you.
So in the sixth district, and this is always a hard question because I don't know in 2021 what COVID and 2020 will have done to us, but if I could just answer based on where I think we will be, I would like to work on the getting past the 1/10th of 1% mental health tax. We need to be supporting our mentally ill community members who are just, they're not, they're not getting the support they need. They need wraparound services. It affects children and adults, and it really does impact the ability for people to thrive in our county. And so, and then with that, you add homelessness. And I think homelessness is going to be even more crucial because of this pandemic and the housing bubble, not in a housing bubble with the investment industry that we had a while ago, but housing bubble like rents coming due, mortgages coming due, and things not going well. And I think that we need to be ready. So I think coming up with a way of supporting the mentally ill and making sure that we are supporting the homeless as we are moving through that transition period is going to be really, really important. So I'm gonna let us go on, because I know we don't have a lot of time, so.
Jason, same question for you. And would you also let our audience know what district you are hoping to represent?
Yes, I am running for the position for District Six, which serves the communities of Lakewood, Stillicum, Dupont, Anderson and Kedfron Island, JBLM, and Parkland.
Thank you. So what are you hoping to address in terms of the biggest issues in that district?
I think the biggest issue, we've heard the word, but I think the biggest issue that has subset components is how can we best make this entire community thrive coming out of COVID? And I break down that large concept into three components. One is the economic resilience that we need to have as a county. And we have had some significant impacts to our retail sectors, our restaurants and other small businesses that are being very challenged, that we have to ensure that we've got good diversification in our economy, better jobs that are of a higher paying nature, so that we can come out of this economic hit more resilient than ever. The second component really is public safety. You know, we've heard a lot in the last few months about concerns with our Black and Brown communities over how our policing is effectively impacting folks in this community. And there's been a recent report about disparate impacts between not only arrests and incarceration of the different minority communities that we must address now. I think that's a big issue for many people in our communities. How do we better promote community policing in a way that's seen as not only safe but effective, but also fair for all of our communities? And that is a big issue to thrive. And finally, the third component is the social service component, ensuring that we've got a good handle on the housing and homelessness issue. We've got the low and lower income housing issue, but we also have affordable housing needs because we have a greater population that's coming to not only Washington State, but Pierce County that we must address. On the mental health tax, I have indicated my strong support for the 1/10th of 1% behavioral health funding tax. I think all three of us on this talk tonight are supportive of that because we know that it will have an impact positively, not just on the folks who need behavioral and substance abuse help and services, but will also help bring folks out of some of the homelessness issues that they face as a result of their mental health and substance abuse issues. So if we can get these components together, economic resilience, public safety, and mental health and homelessness, I think we will better thrive as a community. And that's what I hope to bring.
Thank you, Jason. All right, Mr. Mello?
I mean, undoubtedly, all of us, all of us on this on this discussion this evening, everyone watching and everyone who doesn't have the opportunity to watch, clearly, the impacts of COVID to our public health system, our public health and our and just our hierarchy of needs, our basic needs, is affecting all of us, no matter our economic position. Absolutely top of mind for all of us. And certainly, county government has major roles to play in not only helping to navigate our public health system and protecting the public health of all of us, but also our recovery, in particular, housing. And I plan on continuing to spend a lot of time on homelessness and affordable housing when serving at a more regional level.
Outstanding. As I listen to all three of you, you have answered my next question in terms of what you think is important for our community. So for the sake of time, I'm going to move on to our next question, which I feel is equally as important, and that is, as a county council member, what will you do to address the disproportionate impacts of COVID-19 on those who are Black, Indigenous, and people of color? And let's start with, let's start with Jason first, please.
Well, I think passing the behavioral health tax is going to help quite a bit. I am one that believes that access to healthcare is inextricably linked to economic security. And so to the extent the county council can pass the 1/10th of 1% behavioral health tax, that's going to provide greater access to mental health services. And I think that will help provide not only economic stability and personal security and stability for those that are affected, but I think it will help the entire community. We have to get back on track because the state and the federal government did us no favors years ago when they cut mental health services funding at the state and federal level. So now the cities and the county are picking up the pieces, and we need to move forward in a very positive way to make that happen.
Jenny, what would you add to that?
So one of my concerns is, we have the data from our county and the health department that our Black, Indigenous, and people of color have higher rates of health concerns. So we knew going into this, as soon as we knew COVID was affecting specific areas with respiratory and people with pre-existing conditions, we knew those communities were at risk. And so I think that the county needs to be working to be very intentional about getting out into those communities and providing testing. We need to be making sure that if there's any language barriers with some of the like Hispanic and Pacific Islander and Asian communities, that if there's a language barrier, that we are making sure that they are informed, they know where testing is, they know how to access it, they know how to quarantine, there's some misinformation about what to do if you're in quarantine, because they'll quarantine with their whole family. How do we support a family if there's 10 people sharing a space? They can't quarantine. It's just not going to happen. So I think when we look at families that are Black and Brown and Indigenous families, we need to be, well, and individuals as well, we need to make sure that they have the supports if there's something missing. And the other part is that we know a lot of our frontline workers are people who are Black and Indigenous and people of color. They tend to end up in jobs that are at those front lines. So they are going to work. They had less privilege because of our systematic racism, and so they are on the front line, so they are at greater risk. And then you add the pre-existing conditions. So we just need to be very intentional about getting out in the community and then going to organizations like this organization or these two organizations. How can we support you? What information do you need? Who do we need to talk to and partner with you so that we are making sure that the information is getting out there? And people know how to use the science that we have now to protect themselves during a pandemic, and that it's not hidden from them.
Thank you for that. Ryan, what are your thoughts on this?
Just amazingly thoughtful comments from my peers here. The thing that I would just expand on that I think about a lot about our Brown, Indigenous, Black, and people of color communities, as I think as Jenny indicated, we've always known, I suspect everyone who watches this, we've always known that our Black and Brown communities have been disproportionately impacted by racism and, you know, something that's really becoming well-known in public health and local government, that being the social determinants of health, right? We know that just under 20% of whether or not someone is healthy or not, just 20%, is whether or not they have a doctor and go see a doctor, traditional medicine, only 20%. 80% of whether or not someone is healthy is everything else. Their stress level, whether or not they are in poverty or not, and can afford their basic needs, how their community is built, can they walk around, do they have a park? The air they breathe, can they eat healthy food? The other 80% determinant of whether or not they're healthy or not does not have anything to do about whether or not they have a primary care physician and they go see her regularly. So COVID, I've been accused of being Pollyanna many times. COVID, if nothing else, has shined a very, very, very bright light on these very disproportionate impacts that have been on Black and Brown communities for generations. This isn't new, but so many folks who haven't been forced to think about it and see it are now forced to see it. So just a couple of other really clear examples, right? We know that COVID is disproportionately impacting people with asthma. Guess what? People of color are relegated to live near major roadways and highways, breathing fumes from, transportation fumes from cars and trucks all day long. Guess what? They have higher, they have higher instances of asthma, which make them much more prone to the major effects of COVID-19. Guess what? Obesity is a major predictor of whether or not someone can navigate COVID-19 well. Well, people of color are disproportionately impacted and find themselves obese because of lack of healthy food and a walkable community and these sorts of factors that build out where they live and how they live. So these are just shining a bright light and makes us have to work on these social determinants of health, all the much more.
Well said. Thank you. Well, I want to congratulate the three of you because you have blown up our chat. And so I now want to sidecar just a minute to address some of the questions outside of what we had planned because these questions are outstanding. One of the questions that was put forward was, and I think this is an incredible question, as they all are, is tell us about your own anti-racism journeys and how you will impact change on both a county agency level as well within the countywide population. Let's start with that one. I'm going to let any one of you jump in here.
Can you repeat the question real quick again, Amanda?
Absolutely. The question was, tell us about your own anti-racism journeys and how you will impact change on both a county agency level as well as within the countywide population.
Well, I can give you some perspective on my journey a bit. I, like many on the call and some of you I, like many on the call and some of you viewing, have been members of American Leadership Forum where we are brought face to face with these challenging and sometimes uncomfortable conversations. And as a white male, I have learned quite a bit about my own white privilege and have come to respect perspectives about that and understand fairly well. But certainly I'm learning about institutional racism, I believe it exists, and it's something we have to address. Two specific examples on my personal journey. I was invited by Councilmember Mary Moss, who's our African-American member of the Lakewood City Council, to attend a march after the George Floyd and Breonna Taylor incidents and racked so many cities around the country, we had our own march here in Lakewood. And so I was the one gentleman, white guy, from the Lakewood City Council to attend the march, and I did. And so we marched from the city hall to the police station, very large group of folks, and I marched along with them. We had a really good conversation as we were walking down the street, listening to the angst in many of the voices. And when we got to the police station, there were folks who got up to speak, and I was the, unfortunately, the face of the Lakewood Police Department behind it, and I received an earful, and deservedly so. And there were many hard questions presented that day, and I did the best I could to answer them. But the one, the one question that rang true to Candace Wesley, who was leading the march on behalf of much of her organization, Ceasefire Tacoma, was I wouldn't be here marching with you, with my wife and my 14-year-old daughter, if I didn't care. And that rang true to many folks there because Candace took the opportunity to call me back days later and say, you know, I know you took a lot of hard conversations and a lot of emotion, but I appreciated you being there. Would you meet with me to talk about it? And so we've met subsequently to just sit down and have a conversation. And the thing that wraps this up for me is the anti-racism journey begins with connection. We have to be open, and I have learned to be better about being open to these hard conversations because if we don't create connections with each other, we're never going to learn how to be better. And I'm committed to being better, and it starts with a one-on-one or a one-on-20, as I had, or one-on-50, connection, walking with people and learning to be cognizant of the angst and the institutional racism that they have, they have felt and experienced over the course of their lives. So that's a little bit of the journey because we've got a lot, there's a lot to talk about, obviously, but that's just a little bit of the flavor. And I've, I've appreciated the journey, but it's a long path, and we're going to all have to do it together.
Thank you, Jason. Ryan, what should you jump in here?
I'll just, I'll share that, you know, one of the, one of the concepts I've really wrestled with over the past about two years is that it's my work to do to be an actively anti-racist individual, not my people of color friends in my life to do the work for me or even with me. That I've been really grappling with that concept. And so, you know, with, with that in mind, my partner and I have committed, and I ran out of the frame, Amanda, which I normally never do in these kinds of things, to show you the, the, one of the books that my partner and I are, are reading at the moment, Cass, The Origins of Our Discontents, Discontents, excuse me, by Isabel Wilkerson. Highly recommend if you haven't read it yet. The problem is my partner doesn't, I read slowly, so I take a while to read books. And he won't read the same book until after I get through it because I read slowly, but that's, that's for a different day. I, I've been trying to do my work by doing, reading. I've joined a book club of other white folks to, for white folks to do the work together and not have our Black and Brown friends and neighbors do the work for us or even with us. That's been a huge concept. How to Be an Anti-Racist was our last book. You know, these really committed to doing the learning and the thinking together and really committing to being an anti-racist through that learning and doing. As a policymaker, I'm going to fight for an office of equity and empowerment. We created an Office of Equity and Empowerment. I was not in the lead on that initiative. Mayor Strickland and now Mayor Woodards was in the lead when I served alongside them in the Tacoma City Council. I was proud to have their back and make it a, a very worthy initiative, worthy of general fund support, which is not easy to do in local government, to say no to a bunch of things and say yes to something new, like an Office of Equity. But I am, I am all in on creating an Office of Equity because I think when you analyze major policies and resources through that lens, you get much different answers. And I think that's how you institutionalize the thinking in local government and in institutions is when you put in those thinkers who are, who are challenged with thinking and relating to policymakers, how is this policy disproportionately impacting people of color as an example, or low-income people? You get different answers, you govern differently, you resource differently. And so I really want to fight for an Office of Equity because I think that's foundational to long-term change.
All right, Jenny, after you've heard all this, what is your response?
So as far as my journey, it began a while ago. I do teach high school, and we know that we have an issue with the school-to-prison pipeline. And so schools and school districts have been tackling this and really trying to figure out what do we need to do to, to break that pipeline. And we're still doing that work because it's not broken yet, and that's very apparent. We still have more students who are Black and Brown and Indigenous that are not graduating from high school. We still have issues with the numbers of suspensions. And so when, when I, as an educator and a leader in my school, look at that data, I mean, look at that data, I have to, you know, check myself and question, am I part of the problem or my part of the solution? And when I see that data, I'm like, I'm still part of the problem. If we are seeing this so disproportionate across the community, so what do we need to change? What do we need to do? And that's where my path has been. It's learning to, to use some of the ideas, the anti-racism, that you need to be able to have those conversations because our school systems often are, are places where it should be safe for all to take risks and to take challenges, and we know it's still not. And I wish that we had the ability to just flip a switch and fix it, just like everything else, but it takes work, it takes those courageous conversations. It takes, it takes what Ryan was talking about when he was saying, you know, it's, it's not the work of the families of students of color coming in and teaching teachers. It's supposed to be the work we're doing. And, and we need to be willing to put in that effort because the payoff for our community will be, will be so amazing if we can get our schools to really wrap around that. As far as policy, we just recently instituted the, the coalition where we have the different groups from each district who are supposed to be working and looking at what's going on in their community as far as institutional racism and just really bringing that information and that voice to the county council. I want to make sure that that work continues because that was a great first step, but it's, it's just the first step. And I want to make sure that we tie in the Office of Equity. I think that's a fantastic idea. I've heard Ryan talk about it a couple times. And really begin that work because it is work, but it's important for our community. And what I fear is that we will start the work and it will get to the hard part where we start to have those conversations who people say, which is a very typical thing for a white person to say, I'm not a racist, but the reality is that we all do racist things. We all do. We don't maybe intentionally mean to, some do unfortunately, but we all do. And we have to be willing to check ourselves and learn and have those, those growing moments. And if it's not uncomfortable, then you're not learning. So we need to continue that as a county and make sure that we're looking across our communities.
Well said, very well said. Pam, do you want to add anything or would you like to keep all of this until the end? You're on mute, my love.
Actually, I don't think I have to add anything because every time I thought something, our panelists said it. So I was, I don't have to say anything right now.
Okay, good. I was watching your face, and I was watching these questions and then these aha moments. And I thought, I just want to check in to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, I really appreciate what I heard. Not that I'm supposed to be the amen corner, you just keep going and asking those questions.
Hey, everybody needs an amen corner in their life. So speaking of community, this next question will also kind of segue into one of the questions we have in our chats about utility and the issues of the utilities. But here is the question I believe will encapsulate that question. The current Washington State eviction moratorium, as we know, is scheduled to end next Thursday, October 15. So here's the question. Are you in favor of the governor extending the moratorium? Or is there another solution? A series of solutions that should be used to prevent a flood of evictions between now and the end of the COVID-19 pandemic? And then, go ahead.
I'm not shy. I definitely think the governor needs to extend the order. You know, with rising unemployment, last I checked, it was hovering around 18%. And I'm absolutely sure much higher for Black and Brown and Indigenous communities, but 18% for the general population across the county or across, that was a statewide unemployment rate that I read. So absolutely, until we have more comprehensive solutions, we're, we're just going to have and just an immense crisis, more, more crisis than we have on our hands right now. You know, I happen to be a landlord, now a homeowner. I was most recently a renter. I come to this conversation of housing, you know, really steeped in it and really invested in it. And so I, I understand what it means for a landlord to have their mortgage that is due. And as a renter, what it means to pay rent. And as a homeowner, about what it means to pay a mortgage. So we, we definitely need to keep the moratorium in place because we're going to, there's so many people who will be in an immense crisis if we don't. And we need a more comprehensive solution from federal and state government. The HEROES Act, you know, should have been passed last May. Here we are in October at the federal government. But there are, right, hundreds of millions of dollars there for rental assistance, as an example, that folks need help paying their rent who are unemployed and landlords need help paying. If their renters aren't paying their mortgage, then they can't, they oftentimes can't pay the bank, especially if they're a, a one-unit landlord like me. I'm not a, I'm not a land baron. I own one unit that I moved out of when my family grew many years ago. And I think there's many people like me. So, you know, we got to rely on the HEROES Act until we can stabilize the economy across the board. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Ryan. Jason, what are you thinking about?
Well, I'm thinking that coming out of COVID, we certainly had our challenges with both unemployment and how that relates to housing security, right? In terms of whether or not we should extend the eviction order. The unemployment rate, I'm looking at the monthly employment report from the Office of the Employment Security Department, Pierce County is about 10.1%. So certainly not as high as 18, but not as low as some of our surrounding counties like King County and even Thurston County is a little lower than Pierce. So we have work to do. But to answer your question about extending the moratorium, you know, I'm, I'm in the maybe camp because I'm not sure we're going to see quote-unquote "a flood of evictions." I just don't know the data yet coming out of it because there's been so much money that's pushed through the CARES Act at both the county and the cities that hopefully some of that assistance, not only the CARES Act money, but unemployment money has been out there, but certainly the extra $600 per week bump is gone. So people are going to be impacted. But to the extent we get the resources to folks, both commercial and residential landlords, to accommodate the need, the true need that's out there, that we should continue to do. The eviction moratorium, I think it's fine to extend it if we get a sense that the numbers truly are going to be rather large. I don't know if they are going to be rather large. I think Lori Davenport would have a good handle on the numbers based upon the pro bono work that she does in the community. But I do think that we can't just simply allow evictions to occur without also having foreclosure forbearance and certainly on both the landlord's side because what's happening, and I represent both sides, tenants and landlords in residential and commercial work as a lawyer downtown. And what I see is landlords are hurting as well because their mortgages are not being restricted or for more. There's no forbearance on the mortgages per se, so they got to pay their commercial mortgages and their mortgages on residential investment properties. And when they're not getting their rent, it's creating a real crimp for them as well. So yes, we can extend the moratorium on evictions, but we also got to have some relief for the landlords so they're not subject to foreclosure work with their lenders. So it's, it's a bigger, they're two sides of the coin, for sure.
Jenny, what is your point of view?
So my point of view is very similar to what we've heard from both Jason and Ryan, that, that we need to extend the moratorium. And one of the things, I've also been a landlord, I owned a home that was a rental, and I know financially, even though I have a job, that I don't think I could have handled six months with questionable rent or half the rent. And so then I, as, you know, an individual, I would have been okay, and I was okay, but could I go, this is a long time, like as a renter or a rental, you're supposed to have, you know, that money set aside for a month or two or six months, but now we're going on seven, eight. What happens when we get to a year? So I think that we need to be looking at, you know, what are we going to do to make sure that we aren't closing down businesses because the actual buildings are being sold or pulled out from people? Those that are paying rent, their rent's going up, so we just need to be very intentional. And I, I definitely think that we need more supports at, at a federal level when it comes to banks and what they will be allowed to do. But my brother is a banker and he has very different views than I do on some of these things. So, and we have some interesting conversations. But I definitely think that we need to make sure that we are continuing the governor's order. The flip side of that, as far as what the, the county could do, which you didn't ask, but one of the things that I'm super worried about is that if these things don't go well and we do end up with evictions, I want to know what the county is doing right now to make sure that we are going to have enough shelters because it's really difficult in the shelters we have now to fit everybody. And now if we need to socially distance, and that is on the county. That is something they should be doing the work right now with our community liaisons and the different coalitions out there. And I really hope that somebody has asked that question and is pushing the county to, to do that work before it's cold, before we have freezing nights and we're going, oh, but we can't use that church for a warming shelter because they can't socially distance. So what are we going to do? So just to add that to the conversation.
You bring up some good points. Pam, what are your thoughts, given where you sit as the CEO of MDC? You're on mute, my love.
Thank you. Sure. Many very valid issues raised here. I would like to speak to Jason's pondering about what really would the impact of the moratoria being lifted look like in our community? And here's a very easy way to, to consider this. We know, number one, that there's a survey that's done monthly, actually more than monthly, the Pulse Survey, and that at the beginning of September, the number of folks, just under 200,000, and I can give you those specific numbers offline, who responded and said, we, I'm behind, my household is behind on its rent. And then midway through the month, only 30% had paid their rent. 70% were still behind on their rent. Of that 70%, just around 20% said, I just don't know how I'm going to pay my rent. 70% were still behind on their rent. Of that 70%, just around 20% said, I just don't know how I'm gonna pay my rent. That doesn't get to your point about what, what's the impact. What we know is that people receive up to three months' worth of rental assistance. And all of us service providers who are supporting the county, we're in partnership with the county and we're providing, we're the pass-through for that rental assistance, we're seeing folks who are way more than three months behind on their rent. That's all you need to know because as soon as the moratorium, the governor's moratorium lifts, people are behind on their rent, even if they are only one month behind. And I understand, like as you mentioned, Jason, as I also heard Ryan mention, the perspective of the tenant and the landlord, because MDC is in that position where we serve both the tenant and we are landlords. So I wanted to elevate that. I also would like to say, Janie, 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 that I am very much aware that the county is working on identifying those locations. This is something that the community does every year, as Ryan would be familiar with. Every year, it's what do we do about increasing the number of the sheltering capacity, given that the weather is changing? And that this is something that everyone is, is wrestling with. So I just wanted to elevate that. And just offline, I can talk to each of you about some other things that are going on. I have a question for you, though. So as you've heard already, the pandemic has really daylighted a lot of issues that speak to disproportionals or just, you know, disparate issues. One of the things that's really becoming evident that maybe we had not thought about prior to the pandemic is the imperative to have broadband as a utility. We are finding, we are seeing that as we try, and not just MDC, but all providers who are trying to remain connected to our consumers, that, and, and keep, maintain safety protocols for our staff, that there are so many folks who cannot, we can't connect with because they don't have Wi-Fi, let alone a device that's not prepaid. So what are your thoughts about that as a utility and as an imperative for our community?
Critical. You know, it's a, it's an essential utility for sure, especially now. We recognize that without the opportunity and the ability to be connected, many of our communities, including our communities of color, are significantly disproportionately affected. If they don't have the ability to have Wi-Fi in their homes for their children to be receiving a remote education or to receive information, it's, it's not good. And so, you know, Ryan may be one, too, can speak to the Click Network and some of the other tools that Tacoma owned and grappled with as they were expanding their Wired City network years ago. But certainly I would be supportive of doing whatever we need to do, both public and private, creating the partnerships to expand the connectivity of our Pierce County region. It's critically important, as we have learned so well over the last seven months.
And I would piggyback on that if, if in fact, we made sure that when we are building homes in our communities and we are building out that it is having it as a public utility, so it is just expected that it will be there. Just like nobody would buy a home that didn't have running water, nobody would say, oh, your electricity will be turned on in six months. It's, you don't buy a home that way. So if it's a public utility, it would be something that we would, that would kind of start to level the playing field a little bit with connectivity. It still is going to walk the socioeconomic lines because people can buy up. We know that's going to happen. But at least if we made sure they had some kind of access, whoever it is. And that in all parts of our county, it was accessible because one of the things that we're noticing in the school district that I work in and in other rural parts of our county, which there is a lot of rural Pierce County, people forget that, but there is. They quite literally don't have access or they're using a hotspot and, you know, they have a hotspot and they're sharing it between, you know, two or three kids, or if someone's working from home, then they take priority because we gotta make sure there's a paycheck so the kids don't get to use it. And, and so it's negatively impacting across the community. And I think if, if Pierce County had done a better job earlier, making sure that it was actually getting further out, at least if it was accessible, because right now there's areas where you can't get it or it's, it is an extreme expense. It's not just call Comcast or one of the other companies and do a hookup or expand your data plan. It's quite literally pretty craziness that you have to do and remove trees and it's just insane. Some of the things that kids have told us at our schools that like, well, we can't get internet without, and then the list is pretty insane. Whereas I know where I am, I can just call a phone number and they'll come and hook me up and it's all good. So again, we gotta look at the community as a whole.
Ryan, I want you to weigh in on this. As Jason said, some of your background when you were on the Tacoma City Council may give us a different point of view or more details to think about.
I definitely share the perspective that it's absolutely essential to our way of life. It is like water and power and you expect, when the toilet flushes, your waste goes somewhere. You have to deal, right? Like it is absolutely a basic utility. And an expectation in today's economy and today's learning environment in rural environments and, and low-income environments, especially as where the disproportionate impacts really lie for access. And as Pam said, it's, it's both basic Wi-Fi, hard broadband and the device. The, the number of kiddos learning on a, you know, like on a, basically a flip phone technology is just mind-boggling that I hear about from teachers in my circle. So access is, access is huge. I think having a, making it a basic utility is really important, right? Tacoma did that over 20 years ago when there was a monopoly and they weren't getting very good service. And so oftentimes when there's a monopoly, you see a couple of things. You either see sky-high prices that are completely not appropriate for the market, which is what we saw with TCI before Click Cable came. So you either see sky-high prices with a private monopoly and/or you see low-income communities, communities of color, rural communities not being served at all, right? Look at where fiber is being deployed, right? It's a profit motive for them. So of course, fiber in Tacoma right now is being deployed to higher-income areas and, you know, more areas just where there's more income, where there's more business. The farther out areas, the hilltop of Tacoma, south end of Tacoma, they're not getting fiber to the home. Why? Because there's no profit to be made. So, you know, I don't, there should not, there should not be a profit to bring water to your house or power to your house or, or be able to flush your toilet. And so similarly, I, I just, I think you solve these kinds of really critical problems by creating more competition. That's what Tacoma did. I think that's what, that's what lots of other communities around the country are doing, to make it a public utility, to, to force that competition and check the private market.
Thank you for that, Ryan. Oh, there's a question in the chat that I think is gonna start a great chain of responses as we start to wrap this up. And it is from our friend Jason, who I, I love and adore. And the question is this, what personal values will help guide your decisions as a council member? And Janie, I'd like to start with you first, please.
So I believe that my integrity and ability to collaborate and work with people, however they can, however they want to engage, whatever level they're at, wherever they are, is going to make me a councilperson that does the work and, and really starts to do some healing in our community. And I think that the skills that I bring to the table and the values that I have as an educator and a union leader and an advocate for youth and families across our community, I believe that everyone has the right to live and breathe and thrive in our community. And we sometimes are not doing the work to make that true and that bothers me. Therefore, I work to change it. And I know it's gonna be difficult, but I'm really excited to take on that work. So I think that's the kind of councilperson I will be.
Ryan, what would you like to add to that question?
Those are great. I would add two things. Right when I was sort of really becoming really interested in the power of public policy to improve people's lives, a certain Minnesota United States Senator passed away in a, in a plane crash. And he had a motto that I adopted. And I say this motto to my, I said this motto to myself every single time I walked into City Hall, not joking. And that is, we all do better when we all do better. I really try to frame up where I spend my energy, my time, my tough decisions, especially when they're really, really tough, they're controversial, you got people pushing you on all sides. I, my personal mantra is, we all do better when we all do better. And I think you often come to different conclusions if you really believe that we all do better when we all do better. You know, my other values that I try to live with and, and shine through are honesty and integrity. I've learned in 15 years of public policymaking that really tough issues in this world that face us in this urbanizing county, a lot of people pushing and pulling on you. And I think some of, you know, some of the most important values to have is staying true to being honest and having integrity. I've known quite a few people who tell people what they want to hear. While I listen, I really try hard to listen. I really try to hear from people who think differently than me. I love to learn. I love to make decisions based on data. And I work really hard to be honest. And if I just, and if I disagree with you, to be civil about it, to have a dialogue with you very civilly and explain my perspective while being open to different points of view. But always being honest and integrity and not saying what you want to hear, just so that I don't upset you.
Thank you, Ryan. Jason, you have that look on your face like you're thinking some heavy thoughts. Would you share them with us?
Well, I am known as a heavy thought thinker. I try in terms of the personal values. I think integrity and honesty are certainly high on my list. And I hope that people who have worked with me would, would say that about me. I certainly believe that to be the values that I hold dear. In terms of public policy work, I would think people would also ascribe to me that I am a collaborative person, that I listen well and I am thoughtful about my positions on public policy. And my goal is always to figure out, when I look at the data and we get the conversation going, where we all kind of chew on an issue, what is best for the community? Because to me, the biggest value that I could bring to the public policy arena is a heartfelt desire to be better together. Because many of the issues that we will face at the Pierce County Council, they're not partisan issues. There really aren't Republican potholes or Democratic potholes. There are potholes that the community needs to address or homeless issues that are not Republican issues or Democratic issues. They are community issues that if people thinking with the right heart and mind, we can get the best ideas on the table. The data should be the data, but we can get the best ideas through active listening and come through with really good solutions. And that's what I value, being better together. And I would think that as we go through these crazy campaigns, you know, we, we listen to what we all have to say, but it's also important to listen to what others have to say about having worked with us. I have a track record. I've been doing this a long time. And I value the opinions of so many others who have, come to support me from both sides of the quote-unquote "political aisle" because I have these personal attributes of integrity, willing to listen, being honest with folks and being willing to make the hard decisions to be better together. And that's what I hold dear. The only reason, it goes to your first question, why are we doing this? I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't think I could make a difference. Why go through the hell of a campaign if you don't think you can personally bring something that will make a difference? And that's what I hope to do.
My last question, because I want to be respectful of your time and also our audience's time because it's getting close to dinnertime, as my grandmother would say. And this is the question, it has two parts to it. Other than the normal stress of a political campaign, number one, what is keeping you up at night? And number two, what, where are you finding hope right now? And Jason, I'll start with you.
I am a professional problem solver as a lawyer and as a mediator and policymaker. What keeps me up at night are the challenges facing my clients. I have a lot of small business owners that are facing challenges. I have landlords where their restaurant tenants are shut down and they are out hundreds of thousands of dollars of rent. I have a lot of companies that I represent that are having challenges and their problems keep me up at night because I am entrusted by them to help them solve their problems. And so those, those keep me up at night because I try to do the right thing by them and they trust me to help guide them through these troubled waters. That and keeping my family and my kids healthy. I have, I have family members that are going through health challenges and those kinds of things keep me personally up at night. And I know many families are going through both economic challenges and health challenges. And I, I think those keep all of us up at night.
Jason, what is giving you hope right now?
You know, what's giving me hope is, and I think Ryan and Janie would say the same, that there are so many people out there willing to help, that are willing to step up, who believe in each one of us. And they're, they're saying that we are willing to help you along this path. And that gives me great hope, and not just for me or for Janie or for Ryan, but for the system that people believe in this community. We all want the right things. We want our families to thrive. We want our communities to thrive. And that gives me hope because people do want all of us to thrive and get better. And so I see that every day when I'm out, when we're making calls or knocking on doors or talking to people on the phone, there is a lot of hope for the future. We just have to harness that energy and, and direct it in a positive way.
Janie, what's keeping you up at night, but what's giving you hope when you wake up in the morning?
So my students are the answer to both questions. My students and their inability to get out of their house and socialize, and I know some still are, which also makes me worry because then I know they're not following social distancing. And I just, I do not feel like as an effective, as an effective teacher, teaching over Zoom. It's, it's just not the same. It's not enough time. But at the same time, telling a kid to sit in front of a screen for six hours of class time, I know that's bad. So it's how to, how to simulate and do the work that I, that I did so well last October and that I'm not doing. Things that are bringing me joy, my school is talking about doing Spirit Week. I was a huge, huge supporter of Spirit Week and Homecoming and dressed up on all the days because it built community and the kids that could laugh with me or sometimes at me, I mean, that, it brought them joy. And they remember those things. And, and how do I simulate that? So we're trying to come up with, you know, creative ways of doing that. And then I really, and this is not really campaign, but it is campaign as far as joy. I, as a first-time candidate, I love talking to voters. And when I talk to them and they, they hear that I'm a teacher and they, you know, they, they want to ask me questions like, okay, so what do I do if? And so it's just really engaging to just start being an advocate when I'm, when I'm on the phone. I mean, I'm literally on the phone with these people I've never met. I'm not elected and yet I'm already starting to try and support and help them where I can. So that, that brings me hope and, and a little bit of affirmation for myself, a little bump, you know, pat on the back. Good job, Janie, while you're, while you're doing this really grueling work of contacting people. So that's where I am.
Thank you for that. Ryan, what are your thoughts about what's keeping you up at night besides the book you're reading? And what is giving you hope the next day?
Definitely keeping that light, light on that my partner has to put up with when I'm trying to read a chapter before bed. But quite seriously, figuratively and. But quite seriously, figuratively and literally, what, what does keep me up at night is my partner's anxiety. Some of you know him personally and he, he's okay with me sharing this. We have many conversations. He has debilitating anxiety. It often stops him from going to bed. It stops him from being productive during the day. And so not only is that super difficult to watch, I can barely do anything. But we're lucky that we have healthcare, right? We have great healthcare. We have access to healthcare. We have a roof over our head. I often think about the folks who have similar or worse debilitating mental health or physical health disorders, trying to navigate this really unjust world. And it really literally keeps me up at night, at least with my personal situation for sure. You know, my hope comes from my team at my, at my work, and I think they're indicative of a lot of folks out there, folks, frontline workers, small business owners, et cetera, trying to just put one front in front of the other. My team at the Pierce Conservation District is amazing. They've pivoted during COVID to deliver our natural resource protect, our natural resource protection work in unbelievably creative ways. I don't know, I do not know how they think of it, but they do. They continue to deliver program every day despite the many challenges. And I know there's lots of other small businesses, nonprofits, others who are putting one foot in front of the other and figuring out how to make it work. And that's, it's incredibly inspiring and hopeful to me.
Thank you, Ryan. Pam, as I've said before, and I'm going to say it again, so you know what's coming. Would you like to drive us home and tuck us in?
Yes, I first want to say how how appreciative I am and in awe of each of you for the ways that you are serving the community already and for which you are seeking to serve even more so. And my hat's off to you. I have no desire to participate in brutal campaigns. I appreciate, we very much appreciate your time. I very much appreciated as an African American woman hearing your, you speak about your epiphanies and your anti racism journey and what you are doing and how you are seeking to walk in front and dismantle. I want to say thank you for that. I wish each of you well. I want to say to the audience, and I know that some of the folks who are at least in the Zoom call are MDC staff, how much I appreciate that they participated and to remind everyone. People tend to think I will only vote. Some people think this, I'm only going to vote every four years, vote for the president of my choosing and that's it. And I just want to remind folks, all politics are indeed local and how important it is to vote and participate in local campaigns. Vote, do your research, call your candidates and ask them the hard questions because they're, they should be ready to answer those hard questions. And again, I just want to thank everyone for participating. Stay well. Good luck, the best to you. And we just say good night to everyone. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. See you next Monday.
Thank you.
Thanks for the conversation.